Okay, with that, notice is hereby given of a regular meeting of the City of Friendswood Planning and Zoning Commission to be held Thursday, August 12th, 2021, beginning at approximately 7:00 PM in the council chambers at City Hall located at 910 South Friendswood Drive, Friendswood, Texas. The Planning and Zoning Commission Regular Meeting is called to order. We will now receive any communication from the public or committee liaisons to the commission. To comply with provisions of the Open Meetings Act, the commission may not deliberate on subjects discussed under this agenda item. However, the commission may direct such subjects to be placed on a later regular commission agenda for discussion and/or possible action. Please note that public comments will be limited to a maximum of five minutes per person. And as I mentioned, Becky Bennett, to my right, will be the timekeeper. A yellow light will come on, on the podium. I'm assuming that still is in operation. Thanks. When you have one minute left, and then a red light will come on at the end of your allotted time. Also, out of respect for those speaking during this public comment period, please refrain from any outbursts or interruptions which could disrupt the meeting and discourage others from speaking. So with that, is there anyone from the public that would like to speak at this time, under our general public comment period? Okay. Seeing none, well, that's retrieved. We'll hold on to that one. Next is the commission's public hearing where we will receive comments, both oral and written, regarding four items tonight. The first item is Proposed Amendments to Appendix C, Zoning Ordinance, Section 7P6, the permitted use table to allow NAICS use #524, insurance carriers and related activities, #541, professional, scientific, and technical services, #551, management of companies and enterprises, and #561, administrative and support services, as permitted in the industrial zoning district. Also to amend, Section 8.2I. Yep, got it. No, two. I'm pretty sure. That's the overall, I thought. Right? Yes.
Oh, EI2. Sorry, you're right.
Section 8I2, perimeter landscaping and screening to allow the commission to consider alternate screening plans for uses interior to a common development. Section 8JC, lighting and glare to increase the foot candles allowed interior to common development. Section 7.5, community overlay district boundary, to reduce the community overlay district boundary on FM 2351, from 300 feet to 150 feet, from Beamer Road to Tukler Creek. And Section 20, definitions, to add a definition of common development. Becky, do you have the staff summary for this?
Yes, sir. So, this is a combination of five different ordinance changes for primarily the industrial zoning, but it could impact citywide other districts, other developers. This was originally brought up from conversations with the developer and their engineer of record for the Panhandle PUD. The thought process was if we could tweak some of our ordinances and they could tweak some of their plans, then they could come in and build without having to use a planned unit development. So, this is a result of those conversations.
And this is something we've been working on for...
Yes, sir. We've been working on this for several months. The subcommittee has vetted this. We brought it to the commission as a whole once before, made some minor tweaks, and now we're bringing it back for an official recommendation to City Council.
Got it. Is the applicant present? Would they like to make any brief remarks on this topic?
This is a city-initiated, so I guess if the developer...
Okay. Just double checking. Okay. Fair enough. Okay. Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak for making these changes? Seeing none, is there anyone from the public that would like to speak against making these changes? Okay, seeing none. Our next public hearing item is Proposed Amendments to Appendix C, Zoning Ordinance, Section 8I2F, preserving trees to amend the tree mitigation requirements. Becky?
Yes, sir.
Grab the staff summary, please.
This is another subcommittee item that we've discussed at length, following lots of discussion about trees on our, specifically on Friendswood Drive, large trees that people are wanting to protect. There's limits to what the city can impose on private owners, but we did go in and increase our mitigation requirements. So, if people need or want to remove trees, then the burden for putting them back is going to be a little bit steeper. That way, maybe it will make them second guess removing some of the larger trees. Primarily, this is going to be, instead of replacing with a three-inch caliber tree, one for one, it's going to be accumulative inches of everything that's been removed. Once you get into the historical trees, as people like to call them, there's a multiplier for it. So, it's definitely a lot higher. And then, we're also going to offer credit for removal of invasive species, which we don't do right now. So, if you get rid of trees that are harmful to the ones that we do want, then you'll get a little bit of credit. I think the only other big change is instead of getting bids for tree replacement, we'll do a flat rate. That's how all of our sister cities seem to do it, and it works pretty well for that. But we did bring this to the full commission, had a little bit of back and forth, and this is the final version, and we would like to make a recommendation to City Council.
Okay. Is there anyone that was, from the public, that would like to speak for making these changes? If you would, please step to the podium and tell us your name, please. I had your card, I just couldn't find it. So, there. Ms. Perry. How are you this evening?
Good.
Good. I'm glad you came.
Me, too. Hi, my name is Ella Perry. I'm eight years old, and I am here because of the tree ordinance. I do support the tree ordinance, but for the trees that are important to Friendswood, I, like the ones the founder planted, I think those trees need to be protected more. These oak trees are the life of Friendswood. We can't just let them go away. They help us, and we need to help, we need this tree ordinance to help them. And as I said, I agree with the tree ordinance, but I want to help protect these trees more like marker wood. Thank you.
No, thank you very much. We appreciate you coming in to talk to us. Is there anyone else that would like to speak for making these changes? Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak against making these changes? Okay, seeing none. Our next public hearing item is Proposed Amendments to Appendix C, Zoning Ordinance. Oops, nope, it's not. Is it? Our next one is Proposed Zone Classification Change for Approximately 3.65 Acres Out of 18.0137 Acres Located Along FM 2351, Which Is More Fully Described In The Agenda, To Change From Community Shopping To Industrial So That The Entirety Of The Tracks Will Be Zoned Industrial. Aubrey?
Good evening. So, this property is out on 2351, and it's kind of in relation to Item A. So, the tract identified in the red outline is the property, and the request is to change the portion that's blue, which is community shopping center currently, to be industrial so that the entire tract is industrial. The public hearing notices were sent out, so a newspaper notice was posted. Everybody within 200 feet of the boundary was notified, and the sign was posted on the property. And, that's it? Okay. I gotta remember, that's the last one. The property is currently vacant. There's nothing on the property. They will be bringing site plans once they start developing for the Industry Part II development for this.
Okay. And just offering up, is there not, if the applicant would like to make any comments? Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak for making these changes? Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak against making these changes? Okay. Seeing none. Our final public hearing item is A Proposed Zone Classification Change For 183.386 Acres Of Land Located Along Both Sides Of The Future Friendswood Lakes Boulevard, Friendswood Parkway, Being 183.386 Acres Of Land Consisting Of Several Tracks Including 96.224 Acres Of Land In The Mary Fabro Survey Abstract Number 69, And 86.442 Acres Consisting Of Tract 1, 59.521 Acres Of Land Situated In The ING NRR Company Survey Number 5, Abstract Number 622, All Located In Friendswood, Galveston County, Texas, To Change From Avalon At Friendswood Plan Unit Development 2019-37, And Unassigned Zoning To A Revised Avalon At Friendswood Plan Unit Development Consisting Of 183.386 Acres. Aubrey?
Yes, sir. So, as that wording indicates, the original Avalon At Friendswood PUD was approved in 2019. It consisted of 259 lots. So, this is adding the additional 26-plus acres that we got from League City. Wasn't really a trade, it was a donation in exchange for some tax dollars. So, when we annexed it, obviously, there was no zoning assigned, so this proposal is to incorporate it into the Avalon At Friendswood development. So, this would be the new land plan. A new ordinance will be written that they'll need to comply with. So, the new plan includes 295 lots. And then, the phasing, Phase 1, Section 1 is 105 lots, which is already in process. Phase 2, Section 2 would be 65 to 70 lots. And then, Phase 3, 100 to 105 lots. Phase 4, 20 to 25 lots. Basically, they would be developing everything on the southward side of the new boulevard first, and then move to the north side of the boulevard. Their regulation matrix didn't change, same as it was before, just including the new lot counts. And again, notices were sent out. We did newspaper property owner notices, and a sign was posted on the property.
Okay, is there any, thank you very much. Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak for making these changes? You could tell us your, tell us your name.
Hi, I'm Catherine Parker with Metaplaning and Design. We're the applicant for the project. And so, we just have a presentation to kind of walk through what some of the proposed changes are. How do I change?
Is the clicker there?
No. So, as Aubrey said, this is primarily due to a recent annexation into the city, and so, we're just including the additional, it's almost 27 acres. The, oops. This is the plan that is currently with the existing PUD of the property, and the proposed lot sizes there are 60s, 70s, and 90s. And in front of you now, we have the revised plan, which basically is including now the remainder of the lake that's existing in that area, and the lots that are around the perimeter of that lake. And we'll keep the same lot size that we had previously, the 60s, 70s, and 90s. Here we have the open space that is included in the project. One of the things that was also added as a part of this provision is that we've been able to increase the amount of open space. It previously had about 26%, and we now have about 39%. Part of that is for the size of the lake on the south, but the lake on the north has been slightly increased also. And there's been some increases to some of the open space. The park at the northern side of the lake is going to be a rec center, and then there's just some other areas along the southern side of the lake that have been added also. So, total, there's about 72 acres of open space within the development. Here's the proposed land use and lot size matrix. No changes were made here, with the exception of removing the zero lot line option, because that's not intended to be developed here. The only other modifications to any of this was in regards to lake lots. Previously, they were going to extend to the water, and now, there's going to be a maintenance berm there. So, we took out some of the language in regards to that. But as far as lot size setbacks, everything has stayed the same. And the intent is really to just bring the existing zoning to the new tract that's been recently annexed. Just as a reminder, any of you who were here when this was originally developed, probably saw some of this, but this is a project that's being done by Taylor Morrison, and they've done a lot of projects in the area. Avalon At Cinco Ranch, Avalon At Riverstone, Avalon At Sienna, Ring Green, and Telfair. So, here, they're bringing their Avalon project and product to Friendswood. They've got a lot of experience over 100 years within the greater Houston area, and bring really high-quality development. Here's some images of projects that they have elsewhere in the area. You can see some of these are lake lots, like what we're going to be having here in Friendswood. Some other images to just show some of the lake conditions. It'll be a gated community coming off of Friendswood Lakes Boulevard. Again, more images specifically with the lake and some of the homes. So, again, I just want to point out that, you know, there's an increase in the open space. We're trying to increase amenity for residents of the development. The park that's going to be a part of the facility is going to have basketball court, bocce ball, I believe there's going to be a fire pit, pavilion, so a lot of amenities that'll be of use to the residents of the community. It's also providing lake view for people who don't back up to the lake, and then other areas around the lake that will provide that same view. We'll be available if you have any questions, but like I said, I just wanted to kind of go over the gist of it, but primarily, we're just looking at, pulling the same zoning we previously had, and just incorporating it on the new acreage. So, thank you for your consideration.
No, thank you very much. It's an exciting project.
I'd like to add one thing, if you don't mind. Can we go back to that land plan? So, one of the additional things I just wanted to point out, since these are the new lots on the new section, we, as the city, did require the street connection to the lakes at San Joaquin. Yeah. Because, it was for a life safety, like, for life safety reasons. Both the lakes at San Joaquin and this subdivision will be gated communities that are developed around a large body of water and have limited access. And so, Public Works and Engineering actually experienced a recent situation that could have potentially grown into the need for an additional point of egress for residents. And so, the HOAs are working together to get the gate built, and then work out agreements on who's going to maintain it in the future. It would be an emergency access gate only. It will not have, like, pedestrian codes or anything like that. It's only for emergency purposes.
It won't allow for cut-through traffic or anything between developments?
No.
So, the gated communities will still be private?
Yes.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
But just so I'm clear, emergency services would be able to access, gain access both directions through that gate?
Yes.
Yeah, it'll be same as the other gated entrances for the project.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak for making the change? Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak against making the change? Okay, thank you. Before we move on to our consent agenda, I do have a speaker card that came up to me concerning a later topic that's on, currently sitting on our consent. I think it would be the easiest would be just to suspend the rules and have another public, open for a public comment and let them agree. Mr. David Goken?
Yes.
How bad did I butcher your name?
It's German, and it came with an "oobla" before. So, it's been bastardized many times. Thank you.
Do I need a vote to suspend the rules? Sorry, one second.
It's okay. You can be informal.
Okay.
No one objects?
Okay.
I'll make this quick. Thank you for the time. I wanted to address, not so much the replot, the replating, but the traffic on Falling Leaf Road, which this would impact. It has impacted already, the natorium, and the road into the school from it. The 1,000-block of Falling Leaf is, well, that whole section of road is very narrow. It is probably one of the most narrow roads in Friendswood. The speed limit for that reason is listed at 20. Last time, we had a cop out with radar gun with his car. He was measuring it at 34. Without him, I mean, it, people go up 60 miles an hour. It's a straight shot from the stop sign at Greenbrier all the way to the oil fields. And they do, they drag race on there. I see ATVs, I see golf carts, people walking, no sidewalks, no shoulders. It's an accident waiting to happen. I just really want you to address that, do a study, figure out what we can do. I mean, I've done all I can do. I've asked the city for speed bumps. I've asked the city for, with an natorium there, to make it 20 mile an hour school zone. All that's been denied. I think something has to be done before something terrible happens. And I'd just like you to address that. Thank you.
Thank you. We typically don't respond to, in public comment periods like this, but I will just try to see if I can bump the rules a little and tell you that, really, at this body, this probably isn't the right forum. I greatly appreciate hearing that, but I think, really, that's maybe a better topic for City Council, because for us, it's a plat. If it meets the technical requirements of a plat, then we have no other choice. And you can stay down, I understand your point.
You don't make these studies to see what impact it has?
If it...
When they made the subdivision behind us, the road wasn't changed?
I'll be, it's going to be a long agenda, and I will be very glad to stay afterwards if you're here, and talk to you as much as you would like. But just, I really would tell you that, once it meets all the requirements for plating, we have a legal obligation to approve that plat. So, I understand that you think we can do some of those things. I just don't think that's within our jurisdiction to do so. That's why I really pushed you to make that, make your concerns known to City Council. I think it's a better venue for you. But again, if you'd love to, if you can stay, I'd love to talk to you.
No, I was quite aware of all that, but I wanted to bring it to you.
Okay. Thank, thank you. Thank you. I wanted to make sure I got to you in the appropriate time.
Thank you for your...
Okay. Next is our consent agenda. These items are considered routine or ministerial in nature, and will be enacted with one motion. There'll be no separate discussion of items unless the commission or so requests, in which case, the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. And in particular, for this evening, we, I would like to pull one of the items, the replat of Friendswood ISD High School Campus from the consent agenda and discuss that So, I will make, is there a motion to approve the minutes of the Planning and Zoning Regular Meeting Held Thursday, July 22nd, 2021, the replat of Industry Park Friendswood Reserve 1, and the replat Reserve A5 of Forest Creek Subdivision?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Shows to be unanimous? Aubrey, on the replat of the Friendswood ISD High School Campus?
Yes, sir. So, the, and I think most of you reviewed it, there's, the pipeline easement is shown as a, is transecting that property, and with the 50-foot build lines labeled. Late this afternoon, Becky found the document that actually abandoned that pipeline easement across this property and the natorium property. So, we would like, they need to remove that pipeline easement and those build lines from the plat. So, if we approve with conditions tonight, we can get the corrected plat and bring it back to you at our next meeting. It won't hold them up in any of their processes, and that's the cleanest way to get the plat approved correctly.
Okay, so, let me say it back to you. So, you're just removing it completely from the consent agenda tonight, and there was no vote on that? It'll come back to us next time?
Well, no, y'all still need to do a motion to approve with conditions?
Okay.
And then, it requires them to resubmit, so...
Okay. Do it go in that process?
Yes.
Since we removed it from the consent agenda in addressing, Mr. Go, okay, Goken? Sorry. I'd probably make it worse the second time. I, did anything I say, did that make sense, what I said, that this, although, meets most of the requirements of the plat, it does, things like traffic and that sort of thing don't come into the purview of the commission for plating?
Right.
Is that correct?
Yes.
I just wanted to make sure I didn't say anything incorrectly to you.
Ma'am?
No, no, sir. I apologize, but part of our process and the rules of procedure.
I'll have to talk to her afterwards.
That, yes, sir. Okay, with that, do we have a motion to approve with comments? Staff comments?
Conditions.
I assume all conditions? Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Any, any further discussion?
Just wanted to be clear and put on the record, approve with the condition that the easement be removed. Is there anything else that's needed?
Remove the easement and the pipeline building lines.
And the, that...
And update the title.
Yes, and update the title report. Oh.
You had some conditions written down here. I assume those are the ones, these are the ones that count. So, review the easement, release document, amend the plat, and update the title.
Title report.
Title report, yeah.
Yes, gotcha.
Okay, so you, read you in your motion that way?
Yeah.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor? No, I can't, I can't take questions from the public. We already passed that, I'm sorry.
We have a picture of the plat, so...
We'd be glad to talk to you about it, or you can definitely talk to staff after the meeting or tomorrow.
One clarification, so, we sent two different property owner notices out. So, there was a courtesy notice sent out for this, because it was a replat. And so, it was courtesy notices, again, the commission, if the plaits meet our requirements, they have to approve them administratively. There was a second notice sent out for the SUP, Specific Use Permit For The School. So, if you live within 200 feet, you would have gotten that one. So, the SUP public hearing is going to be on our next agenda, August 26th, and the backup material for that is on the website already. We're working out final kinks on the site plan, but the public hearing for that will be Thursday, August 26th.
Next are our action items. According to the Planning and Zoning Rules and Procedure R 2019-15, all action of the commission shall be made by an affirmative vote of four or more members of the commission present at such commission meetings. Our first action item tonight is Consideration And Possible Action Regarding A Recommendation To City Council On Proposed Amendments To Appendix C, Zoning Ordinance 7P6, The Permitted Use Table To Allow NAICS Use #524, Insurance Carriers And Related Activities #541, Professional, Scientific, And Technical Services, #551, Management Of Companies And Enterprises, And 561, Administrative And Support Services As Permitted In The Industrial Zoning District. Amend Section 8I2, Perimeter Landscaping And Screening To Allow The Commission To Consider Alternate Screening Plans For Uses Interior To A Common Development, Section 8JC, Lighting And Glare To Increase The Foot Candles Allowed Interior To Common Development, Section 7.5, Community Overlay District Boundary To Reduce The Community Overlay District Boundary On FM 2351 From 300 Feet To 150 Feet From Beamer Road To Clear Creek, And Section 20, Definitions To Add A Definition Of Common Development. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Becky, just checking with you, any additional comments that you wanted to?
Uh, no, sir. I think the last tweaks that we made were based on the commission's comments. Um, Tom, did we do, you have anything to add?
No, as Becky said, uh, we went, uh, back and forth a few times, made changes based off comments. Uh, I think it, um, I think some of the changes are, are for the better, so. No, no further comment?
Anything else for? Okay, um, I'll, I'll start. Commissioner Perry?
No comments. No, I'm good. Thank you.
Commissioner Sassen?
No, we've been over this. I'm, I'm good with it.
Commissioner Mann?
Same.
Okay, I'm in the same spot. Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor? Shows to be unanimous? Okay, our next action item is consideration and possible action regarding a recommendation to city council on proposed amendments to Appendix C, zoning ordinance, section eight IF, preserving trees to amend the tree mitigation requirements. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Just touching base, Becky, anything additional that you wanted to?
Uh, nothing additional. No, sir.
Okay. Commissioner Sassen?
Uh, this is another one we've been over several times, uh, and I, uh, I support and I don't think there's anything new to add.
Okay. Commissioner Hinckley?
I'd like to thank our speaker tonight, number one. Very good job. Um, but yes, we've been over this, uh, several times and, uh, I think it's a great improvement over what we, uh, started with. Not that, uh, we did have something, but I think this is a, a step in the right direction, so.
Commissioner Mann?
I think Ms. Ella Perry said it succinctly, so I'm gonna agree with her.
Perfect. Commissioner Kerner?
I would also like to thank Ms. Ella Perry for her contributions this evening, and I have no further comments.
Commissioner Perry?
All good words. Yeah, thank you for our speaker. I, I, I think this falls short of what, uh, uh, the larger community who are interested in our, some of our heritage trees needs, but for, um, our scope and our swim lane, uh, I think this is a really good step. Um, so good job on the subcommittee for pulling this together. I think it's, uh, right in the sweet spot of where it needs to be for deterrent, for development without being, uh, too burdensome on the marketing of private owners. So thanks.
Okay, well, I was gonna say something similar, well, and I couldn't improve upon it, so I have no further comments. Again, thank you for our, our speaker tonight. Okay, with that, uh, if there's nothing else, all, we have a motion and a second. All in favor? Shows to be unanimous? Okay, next action item is consideration and possible action regarding a recommendation to city council on a proposed zone classification change for approximately three point six-five acres out of eighteen point oh-one-three-seven acres located along FM twenty-three fifty-one, which is more fully described in the agenda, uh, to change from community shopping center to industrial so that the entirety of the tracks will be zoned industrial. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second?
Second.
Just checking, Aubrey, anything else to add?
No, sir.
Okay. Start with you, Commissioner Mann?
Yeah, I think we've gone through this a bunch. We've brought it up here. We've worked with the developer and I think this is a good plan forward.
Commissioner Kerner?
I think this is a good plan as was stated, and I'm in favor of it.
Commissioner Perry?
No comments here. Thank you.
Commissioner Sassen?
No comment.
Commissioner Hinckley?
Just out of curiosity for the developer, what's the, uh, timing looking like on the, uh, development?
Come to the podium and state your name as you have done many times.
Stephanie Kennedy with Coastal Bend Engineering, representing Coastal Bend Property Development. Um, the timing is as soon as possible. We're moving forward with, um, the zone change and then the phase two plat. Uh, we've been talking to staff on a consistent basis, along with the fire marshal and everyone else, to make sure the plans meet all the city's requirements. Um, and, yeah, so as soon as possible.
Good. I like the project, so, no other comment?
Thank you very much. Uh, again, this is something we've been working on for, for quite a while, and I, I think that we're in a good spot for where we are. So we have a, a motion and a second. All in favor? Shows to be unanimous? Okay, next action item is consideration and possible action regarding a recommendation to city council for the requested zone classification change for hundred-and-eighty-three-point-three-eight-six acres of land located along both sides of the future Friendswood Lakes Boulevard, Friendswood Parkway, being a hundred-and-eighty-three-point-three-eight-six acres of land consisting of several tracks, including ninety-six-point-two-two-four. Comment? Oh, okay. Acres of land in the Mary Fabro survey abstract number sixty-nine and eighty-six-point-four-four-two acres consisting of tract one, fifty-nine-point-five-two-one acres of land situated in the Mary Fabro survey abstract sixty-nine and tract two, twenty-six-point-nine-two-one acres of land situated in the I-N-G-N-R-R company survey, number five, abstract number six-two-two. I hope we never do this again. All located in Friendswood, Galveston County, Texas, to change from Avalon at Friendswood Plan Unit Development twenty-nineteen dash three-seven and unassigned zoning to a revised Avalon at Friendswood Plan Unit Development consisting of hundred-and-eighty-three-point-three-eight-six acres. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Aubrey, just checking.
Nothing else to add. Thank you.
Just double checking. Okay. And I'm gonna give the applicant one more shot. I- is there anything additional that has come up in your mind? You don't have to.
No, but if you have any questions-
Okay, uh, discussion. Commissioner Kerner?
I have no further comments. I think this is a good plan.
Commissioner Hinckley?
Uh, no, we've been over this plan several times. I like the, uh, the layout. I like the, uh, I like the architectural, uh, features that you guys put in place, so I like the plan.
Commissioner Mann?
I think it looks beautiful and I like, I think this is an easy change just to add that other little part. The one thing that I noticed is, and I, it's just a suggestion, but that bottom half, this new part that we're talking about is in the CCISD vice the Friendswood ISD. And so there's gonna be next door neighbors going to different schools. There's gonna be people moving into this neighborhood that live in Friendswood, that pay at Friendswood and go to CCISD. And so I just think it might be, uh, advisable to give, put a disclosure out to people buying on that side of the, of the street, you know, so to speak, down on the south side, that they all, they will be in CCISD. Uh, I know that, that there's been attempts to try to maybe make that happen. I don't know what else that we can do, but I, I definitely don't want someone to get fooled or, not purposely, but, uh, end up moving into Friendswood and then not knowing that they can go to F, FISD. But other than that, it, it looks beautiful.
Commissioner Sassen?
So I had, I had one question and I just interested in the philosophy. Um, when you started-
Would you like them to come up?
Yes, please, if you don't mind. Um, when you did the land, the, laid out the lots around the lake, I noticed you did ninety-foot lots everywhere, and then as soon as you added the new section, you chose seventy-foot lots for all of the new ones. What was the thinking there?
It's just for, for the market, marketability of the project. It, we did have an increase in ninety-foot lots, um, from what was originally shown, but it just provides a little bit more diversity in what's provided and-
Smaller lots, more lots, and so-
Well, but it, it is also based on just what the demand is.
Yeah, it just, it's a, it's a clear demarcation that you, you changed your philosophy when you went to the new land and, uh, I just wanna make sure this doesn't go against what was agreed to originally. I know there were ratios agreed to in the original plan, and now they're adding a bunch of the smaller lots.
I think by increasing the ninety-foot, you, they maintain the ratio.
How many were increased?
Which is required.
Yeah.
Uh, I don't have the exact numbers. I think it was, it went up a percent or two. Um, but we did, uh, like I said, overall, the percentage of the ninety-foot's increased from what was previously provided. Um, and, and it is, uh, you wanna answer differently, but it's based on, on demand and marketability, trying to make sure that there's a variety for, for the development, um, adding-
As long as it conforms to the agreement, I guess I'm okay. It just seemed odd to be adding-
It's still gonna be the same, same builder. I mean, the homes, the quality, everything about the, the product will be the same. It's just a little bit smaller lot.
Yes, so, so the, the new land is all the smaller lots and the, as you pointed out, the, the different school district.
Well, there's, there's the same, there's seventy-foot lots on the northern east also.
Everything else around the lake looked to be ninety, that I could see.
Oh, yes, but I mean, as far as the lot size goes, there is still that size lot on, on both portions.
Yeah, somewhere, yeah, in other places. This is kind of a change in philosophy around the lake, but, uh, okay, as long as it conforms to the agreement that was originally made. Uh, I'm, I'm okay with it.
Won't you, well, just in case, won't you, won't you hang out just for a second if you would?
Yeah, yeah, we should go back and forth.
Okay. Uh, Commissioner Perry?
Yeah, I wanna pull on that thread a little bit. Um, when, when we approved this, I understand the agreements were set up for the previous, um, agreement. But it, but it was with that tract of land, and, and we spent a lot of time talking about density, right? So I, I know it was a painful conversation for you guys as well. Um, I, this one worries me a little bit. I was on the fence last time, but I understood, now, your marketability and your business model, that really didn't play anything a- as far as me evaluating whether or not this PUD was appropriate. And now what you're doing is, uh, and I don't wanna say take advantage, I'm just, for a lack of words, you're using that previous agreement. I'm not sure if we would have been okay, um, with those ratios at the beginning if it was the full-size property because of the number of sixty and seventy-foot lots that were now put in there. So I know overall you're agreeing that, but let's walk through that a bit, because your sixty-foot lots in particular, um, you had some developmental challenges in that pie piece all the way at the very end. I convinced myself and voted and supported this thing. Um, I agree, it's a beautiful piece of property. That's not my concern. My concern is the number of sixty-foot lots. I understand the market might support it, but our, our ideal state is, is for the, the larger lot sizes, and then now we're in a situation where we're expanding. So you can probably tell where I'm going with this, so I understand that old ratios might have been able to apply here, but I don't see the same developmental challenges on that, um, left-hand side of the map on the new portion to put the sixty-foot lots.
Bobby Skinner with Taylor Morrison, the developer. Good to see everybody again.
Good to see you again.
Um, if you, and I apologize, I don't remember off the top of my head the percentage of sixty-foot lots in our original pud.
I, it's about the same. So you're still there. I don't think you, um, that's why I didn't wanna use, it was, I was hesitant to use the word that you're taking advantage, but it was around seventeen or nineteen percent on the old property, and I think you're, you're at about eighteen-something percent. So it's, it's really close. You had it in your, your opening chart.
The only additional sixty-foot lots that we've added with this, uh, this new land-
You can step to the microphones, cause no one will hear you.
The new land that, that's been included, the only sixty-foot lots are right there where it backs up to the lakes of San Joaquin, and that is, again, a similar situation where we have on the north where constraints, um, to get the, the lots, the, the necessary circulation and such. So the amount of the sixty-foot lots that we've added is, is a minor component of what the total, um, added acreage is.
Or it's seventeen percent.
Right, so it's, it's maintaining the, the intent that the larger lots are still the predominant ones. The other thing I wanna point out though with this is that, yes, that we did add seventy-foot lots, but we've also significantly increased the open space for the project, both with the lake, but then also just some of the, the surrounding open spaces. So-
Okay.
It, we're trying to, you know, give some additional, um, amenity also and, and try, and I know that was a concern that was brought up previously too, especially with the park and if there was gonna be any type of programming within it. So we tried to be able to kind of meet you guys in, in multiple areas that, that we had previously heard of. But, um, you know, part of it is that we're trying to, you, whether you, you know, follow that, that viewpoint or not, marketability is, is a big factor in the success of a project and, and making sure that we have the variety of lot sizes and product that-
Okay.
Will make it successful.
Yeah, yeah, thanks, thanks for, for addressing that. Um, you know, thi- this moves me a little bit closer to, um, maybe flipping on this. Uh, I, I, I think I'm still gonna support it. Um, I think the dialogue we just had is gonna be important for council. Um, they'll probably dig into this as well. Um, I think the overall density, um, if we've maintained that overall density, I think, I think I'm gonna be okay with this. Because I think that was maintained.
Because of the additional open space, the density is, is lower now.
Okay. Yeah, so that was really the thing for me when I voted on this the first time in your favor, so I'm gonna maintain that, but I did wanna have the dialogue, because I think it just flirts with that line a little bit closer, so thank you for, um, running through that explanation and, uh, that's all I have.
Yeah, I, I just wanted to comment. Uh, the word open space is used a lot, and that means, in this case, ninety-five percent of it looks to be lake. And, and I don't consider lake to be the same kind of open space as fields and yards and, and, and walking trails and things like that. And so I'm a little more skeptical on the open space percentage that's quoted over and over again here. So I, I'm a little bit nervous about this, but I'm, I'm also gonna support it. I, 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 but I, I'm, I share your concerns, Marcus. I'm, I'm kinda on the same page. That's all I have.
Okay. Thank you for stepping up and, and talking to us and discussing that with us. Anything I have to say won't end up with a question.
Okay, well, thank you. We appreciate you.
Thank you.
No, those are good points, and, and I, you know, it's stated in, in prior meetings, had concerns about this particular subdivision because of counting the lake exactly as you said, as an amenity. However, um-
Open space, yeah.
Yeah. A- and I, yeah, you're right. It's, it's an amenity, but it's park space and oat and green space. But I have to admit, I, I was appreciative of when they opened up the park, cause remember, the original development on the, I guess that's the north end of that lake, that was a much smaller, you know, it was more of an easement to, drainage easement to access the, the, the pond than anything else, and they, I think they've done a good job of that. Um, and so I guess there, as long as they meet the current percentages, which I hear that they do, I, I support your project. Okay, with that, unless there's anything else, uh, we have a motion and a second. All in favor? Okay, shows to be unanimous. Thank you. We're all looking forward to it. I know that construction has started out that way. Okay, the next action item is consideration and possible action regarding a request to extend the thirty-day period for the processing of the preliminary plat of Industry Park Friendswood Phase Two, per Local Government Code, Chapter two twelve, Section two twelve point oh-oh-nine. Is there a motion?
A motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Aubrey, is there a staff summary?
Yes, the, um, the written request for this extension was on your computers tonight. Um, so with the state law changes that were made a couple of years ago with our, the changes in our subdivision processing and approvals, um, so state law now allows an applicant to request a thirty-day extension, um, while we're processing the preliminary plat. Previously, uh, we do work through drainage and utility issues with a preliminary plat and we always, um, our preliminary plats before, we didn't put signature blocks on them, so they were not in recordable form. So we just wouldn't bring a plat to you if it wasn't ready. Um, and so with the state law change, now the owner, the applicant has the option to do the thirty-day request, so I think this is our first one of these, actually. So if you approve this request, the, uh, the plat is the next item on the agenda, um, which we can table and give them more time.
Which we, sorry, I, I was with you, right? You said the word table.
On the next one.
The next item.
Sorry, understood now. Thank you. Okay, we, so I guess the next would be this case. I know, I was looking back on my notes, who was, commis- thank you. Commissioner Perry?
I don't, I don't have any comments. No, I don't. I'm good, thanks.
Commissioner Sassen?
Yeah, I'm all for this. This allows us to not have to go through the horrible task of finding all the different mistakes on a preliminary plat that's not ready for review, so. This is a managerial way of getting through the new laws, and I support it.
Okay. Commissioner Kerner?
This one needs work. I support the extension.
Right. Commissioner Mann?
My sentiments exactly.
No comment?
I, it, it's all been said. So we have a motion and a second. All in favor? Shows to be unanimous. Okay, the next action item is consideration and possible action regarding the preliminary plat of Industry Park Friendswood Phase Two, a subdivision of fifteen point oh-one-two-seven acres, five point seven-one-seven-nine acres of land being a replat of Reserve A of the BSR subdivision number one out of Lot sixty-three, Divisions B and C of Hoyledale Kaufman Edition Volume Three, Page Six, Harris County Map Records in the Perry and Austin League, Abstract Fifty-Five, City of Friendswood, Harris County, Texas.
Motion to table?
Is there a second?
Second.
Anything additional, Aubrey, just checking?
No, sir.
Is that the right form, motion to table?
Okay, discussion, Commissioner Assassin?
Nothing.
Commissioner Mann?
No comment.
No comment.
No comment.
Let us go, okay. I, yeah, I obviously have no comment. Okay, so we have a motion in a second, to table, all in favor? Shows to be unanimous. All right. The next action item is consideration and possible action regarding a recommendation to city council to amend Resolution Twenty Twenty-Dash Seventeen, Planning and Zoning Rules of Procedure. Is there a motion?
We actually, we actually don't need any, this is just a draft. It is on there for consideration, but it's not ready.
I do not motion.
Do you want to change this to a motion to discuss?
Yeah, let's just do a motion to discuss, that would be good.
I shall move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is that the right way to handle this, Mary Kay? No, I'm looking at her. Help me, help me, how is the right way to handle this?
I mean, I'm fine with it, I don't know if that's a motion that's used, but as long as we're getting work done, I'm not going to argue with y'all. You can just move forward.
But if we have a motion in a second to discuss, we'll actually at the end need a vote?
I think if you have a motion in a second, go ahead and vote on it to discuss it, that way we'll have our period at the end of the sentence.
Okay, well, let's just go, we'll go through the discussion, then we'll vote to discuss, I assume.
No, just go ahead and vote now.
Okay, let's, how about we vote now? I think that's a great idea. Glad I thought of that.
Vote to allow discussion.
Okay, so we have a motion in a second to discuss, all in favor? Shows to be unanimous.
Okay.
Discuss away.
So this is kind of a working copy. City Council just updated their rules of procedure and incorporated some good items that we thought, and actually, Chapter Two, the administration that actually has, forms the Planning and Zoning Commission and kind of lines out what we should do, says that we should keep our rules as close to city council as possible. So, A, the overall look of the rules is a lot more modern than the copy that we've been working off of for who knows how long. But the major changes are the public comment section and the public hearing section. So currently, our rules of procedures give anybody who speaks five minutes. So the new rules for public comments, general comments, a speaker would get three minutes. And for the public hearings, which is specific to ordinance changes and zone changes, they have to sign us, or sign up with a speaker card. They don't have to, we encourage them. The people who do sign up with speaker cards get to speak first, and then anybody else can speak. The order is that staff would give a presentation, and then the applicant gets fifteen minutes to do a presentation, and they can include, you know, PowerPoints or copies, and then after that, public comments would be five minutes. So those are the major changes, other than the overall look of them.
I think it just updates it and makes it cleaner, and it makes us mirror what council's doing, so.
Speak on the mic. Unless I misread this, the public hearing is done, and then we go to consent and then action items? But didn't council change theirs to have their public hearing in the action right after?
They did, and I, because I copied this from their minutes, and I'm not sure how they did that. I can check with Letty, because, so, city council now, when they do their public hearing, the action item is right after it. So it allows the applicant to just stay and then get a decision on their item, and so if we wanted to consider doing that as well, I can investigate that a little more.
I saw that done down in Galveston in their planning commission, and it seemed to work very well.
No, like, for instance, tonight on the Industry Park Zone Change, we would have their public hearing, and then we would have their action item, like, we would vote on it right after, so you don't have to, like, bring it all up again.
Right, I kind of like that.
I do, like, it's simple-minded people like myself.
It just keeps my mind in the right.
Yeah, you're kind of already in that train of thought, so if we want to consider that, I can investigate that a little more, and we can figure that out.
No, that's a great point. Yeah, I think that makes perfect sense, and I saw it in action, and it worked really well.
I think it'd save a lot of time.
And it saved me from having to read some of that twice, that would be, as everybody's heard, that's fantastic.
It's less confusing to the public, too, if people want to.
Yes, yeah.
Well, if we can find a way for them to read it another time, that'd be better.
Do a third one, thanks.
I can't wait for the mayor to read all of these, that'll be great.
Yeah, September thirteenth, I think we get the record for the most CDD items on a council agenda. They're not, it's a lot.
While we're on the different discussions, I like marrying up with city council, that makes the most sense. But city council's got a lot on their plate, and their meetings are big and bold. For us to limit public comments the same as they do might not make as much sense, because we want people to talk as much as possible. I want to hear from everybody as much as possible, so a thought to maybe leaving our five minutes, because we can afford to do so and hear as much as possible, although it's not exactly in line, but at least we give a platform for the public to speak as much as possible without the need, we don't need to shrink it two minutes, except for it just to be in line.
But we'll have the option to extend it.
Right.
Per the, we will have the option to say, keep going.
And they have the five minutes in a different section, so they can do it for five minutes if they want.
But, yeah, I mean, I agree with you. I mean, we're a little bit more informal body, and we definitely want to hear as much as we can, and, you know, when there's an opportunity. So, okay, yeah, it's a good point, but I think, no, but I think we have the opportunity, I think the five matches up, at least from my opinion, matches up well. But then, if it's a topic that makes sense, and we're not, and somebody's continuing to bring new information out versus repeating, which we have seen from time to time, then we just, then we just go, let's keep going. We have that opportunity without breaking our own rules. Is that, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
But I agree with you, hundred percent.
So this will be on our next agenda for consideration.
I had, I had four points. I didn't, I didn't know if you were moving on.
I, no, keep going.
Okay. Well, you covered one. I don't like the optics of reducing public comment. I don't think we need to, just because council did. The ten-day rule, we're doing that, so since our, so that's only buying us three days, since our meetings are on Thursdays. The old language was prior to a Thursday, so we're mimicking council there, but.
Actually, I think that extends it two days to what it was before. It was eight working days before.
So then it's almost a wash.
May I ask regarding that, is that ten working days, or is that ten calendar days? It's not clear. It should be ten, it's ten calendar days. I went back and our, so our resubmital schedule is usually about ten days before our meeting. Okay, might be worth clarifying that. It wasn't clear to me. Okay.
We talk about material that you're going to provide. It says that you, that you shall provide material. To me, that means that you're delivering something, but in this environment, you might want to consider "shall make available", since you, really, you're providing all that material in a collaboration space. That's, probably, might be split in halves, but that's up to you.
Which section are you referring to on that one?
It was in the red lines, where you're talking about, in seven, I think, where you talk about provided to, let's see, it was in a couple of spots. I'll find it for you afterwards.
Shall provide electronic or paper.
Distribution of information, yeah. Sorry, I'm scrolling through it. But to me, it implies that you're physically delivering hard copies or emailing something like, as in a package, but really, you should be able just to make it available to someone and still be compliant.
Okay.
And this, this might be outside the red line, so you can call it out of scope and move on if you want. But the, when we talk in the section for procedure for debate, and if I read it right, you can do a parliamentary objection, and if it's sustained, it's dead there. But that, does that violate our compliance memo where you have to document if it's approved or withdrawn? Or would you just simply say, per motion from the commission, it failed? And that's, let me find that section.
Seven point three B.
Yeah, so it talks about, if the objection is sustained by two-thirds votes, blah, 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 it's permanently defeated. But when, it just, for the most part, it just shuts the conversation down at that point, and I'm not sure how compliant we are with that, I'll air quote, new state law where we have to give feedback if we deny something.
Yeah, and I think that Section One B refers, we had to tweak this a little bit because our processes are a little bit different from council.
Yeah, it's just a place to look. I mean, that's whatever, I'm sure you guys will make it legally compliant, but it seemed, it seemed confusing to me.
Okay.
And then, majority vote required, so it talked about an exception for conflict of interest. Didn't you guys train us that if there's a conflict of interest, there's also documentation that would need to be provided? You don't mention that, I'm not sure if it's important, so.
I thought it was in there. Thought it was, I thought, okay, we, we, I'll go back and study it.
Yeah. Those are, thank you, I'm sorry.
No, 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 you, you're very good at reading these, so we need to double-check that. Maybe I was just reading it in as I was reading it. What else, Mark?
That's it, thank you.
Anybody have anything else? Yeah, I think so.
Thank you all for reading that.
I mean, I had a few minor, minor, just administrative kind of things.
Okay.
But, no, 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 not that I'm going to, I'll just get with you later on it, for the next, prior to our next meeting.
I think Mary Kay had a missp, there was a misspelled word on Section Two Point Eight, too, so we'll fix that as well.
Well, since I already brought it up, since I threw it out there. It talks, it talks about the chairman providing the presentation to city council. We ought to probably say chairman, the chair, or their delegate or designee, just in case there's a, you know, it was already scheduled, and some reason the chair couldn't do it, they ought to be able to have somebody else vice-chair or otherwise, but that, that's just minor. Okay, if we're done with that, next is a discussion item on the future land use map. Under Commissioner Perry?
Yeah, are you going to go through them? Okay.
Oh.
Okay, yeah, there's only a couple of slides here. So here's what we did. So this is, this is the result of our last large changes to the future land use map. So we've still got some work ahead of us to give feedback to the public on. What I've done here is anything that changed from the last time, so the first time you saw this presentation was on Two Twenty-Five, we redlined it on Four Twenty-Two, and this is in the third red line that we're giving today, so you'll see those things in red font. I'll only cover the three, and then everything else that we've, we've made decisions on, we dump to the back as backup material, so I'm not going to go through all of it. So our goal here today is just to get additional feedback from the larger commission, because we're going to start digging into, putting a baseline on this in order for us to go through our formal process. So we went from eighteen to a total of nineteen changes, and I'll talk about that nineteenth change. So we're going to talk about number three, Winding Way, and Five Eighteen, we're going to talk about number eighteen, and we're going to talk about number nineteen. And again, we're just looking for input, because we're going to go in the subcommittee and kind of wrap this thing up, give formal feedback to the public, and then I'll talk about that in our forward work slide. And for the rest of the subcommittee members, you guys jump in anytime if there's something that I mischaracterized or you want to add on, please. Okay. Proposed changes, so the coloring you'll see, so number three, number eighteen, and number nineteen, a little bit hard to read, because there's a lot of words on there, but I didn't want to lose any history. So these are the changes since that we're going to be talking tonight, so you can go to the next slide. Okay, so in my pop-out call-out box, it's, it's a little difficult to find the history on this, so I put it in here so we don't forget it. We started off with, what's that, properties at thirteen-ten or three-ten Winding Way?
Thirteen oh-nine, I think.
That's the, it's that property, right on that intersection.
Five Eighteen and Winding Way.
Yes. So when we started off, it was a special study. We made this, a change in the map at that point in time to single-family residential, which really is it, is it just low-density residential, whatever the label is that we put it. And then, and then we kind of got our hands in there, and we started making a lot of changes. It changed to retail after we did a council work session, but it was prior to comment and collaborations with the public. So we received a lot of feedback in public forum about how those types of changes get communicated. It was really easy for the public to lose track on that. I went and dug into it. And then, those public comments, the other comments that we received, I think we received a total of twenty-four comments. I gave you guys metrics on this last time, and next P and Z meeting, I'll give you another one. A good majority of those twenty-four comments were specifically on this property, with, I would even say, maybe ninety percent of that indicating that it should remain as residential, not changed to a retail or mixed-use property. So based on that, where we stand today, and we did this virtual, digital, email, planning subcommittee meeting, was that we want to go back to the original Two Twenty-Five and Four Twenty-Two status, which provides the future land use classification as a low-density residential. So if you've got anything you want to add, Travis, I know we didn't catch up, but we did talk on email.
Just that, that's what it was. We were making, you know, potential future land use changes. There was a lot of pushback, there's no reason to make those changes then, if that's the pushback. Either way, the property owner, if they want to do something, is going to have to go through the paperwork to do it. So it, so it didn't make sense to make the change now if people did not want it, and that was the only side that we heard from it. We didn't hear anything to make the change, so we stuck with what the people wanted.
In what it was currently, what it had been previously.
Exactly, without.
Well, actually, I think it was currently, some kind of.
It was special study.
It was special study, so we changed it to single-family residential, then we changed it to commercial, and then we changed it back to single-family residential.
That's our current position.
So, so it's, it's a little bit of a misnomer to say we're changing it back to single-family residential. It never was that.
That's fair.
It was, it was this, this special study thing.
But on the future land use map, but the zoning was single-family, is that right? I mean, do I have this right? I'm trying to make sure.
The zoning is single-family residential right now, but on the two thousand eight adopted future land use map, it was special study, non-residential, commercial emphasis.
Okay.
Which is not what it was zoned as, it's what the future land use proposal was.
And as I understand it, from, from some comments made by one of the council members, that they, the owner was polled on this, and he was strongly in favor of changing it. The only thing I would suggest is that someone reach out to him to tell him that what he thought was going to happen is no longer going to happen.
I actually had conversation with him on Tuesday.
Oh, good.
And I did let him know that it is gonna remain single-family residential right now. I invited him to come and address you all tonight if he wanted to, um, and he declined. Um, so he's okay with the single-family residential designation for now.
He's okay with this. That's good. That, that removes my objection.
Yeah, and so let's, let's jump to the next slide because.
Hold on real quick, if you don't, if you don't mind, that on the top left corner of that, what, there's an orange portion of that. Is that a separate section of that same piece of land, or is that?
It's actually.
It's all yellow except for there's a.
Yeah, it's actually a piece of Hidden Cove. Um, I guess Friendswood Drive was changed at one point, so if you look across Friendswood Drive, it's orange over there. It used to be a part of that parcel.
Okay.
Um, and so it'll have to be.
So it's still part of that property technically then?
Technically, yeah.
Okay. I just caught it, was curious.
Okay, so along that thread, right, so we've got, um, oh no, sorry, I'll talk about that next. We'll come back to that thread. This is the, this is the one that got quite a bit of attention too, right? So we've got this major thoroughfare plan that's outside of the scope of this initiative. Uh, the question we brought to this commission, um, in, uh, April, was whether or not we wanted to put retail out there, right? So we had some debate, um, we talked about it, uh, within subcommittee. Our proposal at this point in time is to put retail out there, um, and the main driver for that is because, this, this will, this will allow the most amount of public notice possible. Uh, at least that's the main thing in my mind. Travis, speak up. Without putting retail out there, and, um, number one, it, I, I said number, I said number one was public notice. Eighty-twenty strategy was our pillar, right? So that was the thing that drove us to go and look for more places for retail. If there's going to be a road out there, um, it's, it's very logical to find, uh, uh, best use for property out there for some type of retail, mixed-use community shopping center. We only have one category on this map, which is retail, and that scares a lot of people. But if the road is arbitrary, and we don't know where that's gonna go, the retail is gonna be just as arbitrary because it's gonna stick to that road, at least putting it on the map will serve notice to the public. But that is at least the intention of planning and zoning is to go in that direction.
Drives the discussion.
I, it does, and that was the main motivator, at least on my part, to support that. Travis, you want to add anything?
You nailed it. That's exactly it.
Okay, um, so that's currently on the revision, that the August revision that we have out there. Um, so, uh, that's another reason to get it in the public forum that we're having today. All right, any comment?
No, I think you guys made a good call there. That's, I like it.
Yeah.
All right, so we'll put that one to bed, uh, and then this is the last slide, I believe. Okay, so, um, the changing it, flipping it, future land use, residential SFR versus retail. Okay, so this is the entrance of Sun Meadow. Um, public comment from the owner indicated that their preference is to have this as retail. It fits within our eighty-twenty. It's on a major, major thoroughfare and frontage, so it checks all the boxes. Here's where it gets complicated. There are current homes on the back of that property, um, that have a future land use map and zoning as well, current zoning, right? That see that as single-family residential behind their home, so there are current developments there. My worry was doing a change, um, without the ability for our public to comment to this, and then us giving the perception that, um, something was switched, um, and optics are important here as well. Because no one would have had this indication until they saw this as an ordinance. Um, so the main driver here is to put it out now. Uh, people can watch this, look at it. We have work sessions coming up, um, so there's plenty of opportunity for public to come out and express discontent if they don't agree with it. Obviously, we support owner, um, rights as well, uh, and we're stuck in the middle, right? So that's the hard part of what we do. So this was, this was our most recent change driven from public comment, um, specifically from the landowner. Anything else, guys, that you guys want to add there? Okay.
So, so is there a conclusion from the subcommittee?
No, I didn't mention that, but, um, we just started talking about this. Travis, we didn't catch up on this one. I, I, I think, I think it fits. It like, it checks the box, um, but the problem is, is it gets really great when you start talking. As calling it as something that's, um, best use would be retail.
Well, in, in regards to, in regards to the, uh, future land use map, I mean, we're not changing the zoning. This is something that's gonna be up to the land, the, uh, landowner, right? So that's something that's gonna come up eventually anyway. Nobody, nobody's, I, I couldn't see somebody building a house right there on five eighteen anyway.
Look, no argument here, but.
So that's eventually gonna come up.
Here's what, here's what we learned with public comment. Um, it was certainly a perspective that I had not had. I get that the future land use map is a guideline, but if someone's sitting in this seat five years or ten years from now, they're gonna be looking at that fr, future land use map and think the same things we do now, or someone did a lot of hard work on this early on. Obviously, there was a reason for calling it retail. Public comment indicated that it's not as trivial as you're making it mount to be. You really are setting the gears to go in motion to call this thing retail. It would be much easier for me to agree with a zone change ten years down the road if it's already on the future land use map as that case. So we had to be very careful about changing things when there are developments already there, especially existing citizens, um, in their backyards across the fence, so.
I would be more sympathetic to that comment if I hadn't heard the reverse argument just made when we made that single-family residential and say Alton Todd can make this into commercial when it comes to it.
Yes.
And so we're driving that towards single-family residential, which I happen to believe is the wrong place for it to go. So I, I'm, you know, I think it works both ways. I think we, we, we pick out what works here and, and we go with it. I, I support you changing this to, to retail, uh, in this case, uh, and, and going forward. And it, it won't change unless there's a driver to change, because it's currently zoned the way it is.
And I think that's consistent with what we've been doing along five twenty-eight.
Right.
The Madison property we've discussed and the development along five twenty-eight, that seems to be the natural best fit for that property. But it'd be up to the property owner to decide that and zone it and ask for a zone change appropriately.
Certainly.
And, and Marcus, I, I agree with you. The public comments, and you've done a great job of getting public comment. But for this particular property, I don't, you know, residential does not make sense for that property, in my opinion. So, uh, that's just what I'm saying.
Yeah, I think we could all probably get behind it based off of knowing you guys, um, um, it's just, it's just that optic of changing it, for the public without them notifying us.
What would be the next opportunities for, for making sure, besides this meeting?
Yep, thank you. She was ahead of me on this one. Okay, uh, so August twenty-sixth, next meeting, right? So we'll address public comments there. So we'll pull together another pitch that categorizes those comments and how, um, how we've got those incorporated. Place the future land use map, uh, under configuration control. So, uh, my desire is to kinda lock it down or begin locking it down at that point in time, because, uh, based off of recommendations and desires from the larger committee, we're gonna go, um, into workshop with council in the early or mid-September, first meeting that, that we have there. Aubrey reminded me it's the thirteenth because of Labor Day. So we'll have, um, certainly, we're gonna take action and, um, some, something for consideration from council in that workshop. And then our last planning subcommittee meeting should follow shortly after that, uh, which gets us into August, September, October timeframe where we start our formal P and Z public hearing, and then it comes here for a formal vote from all of us. So you've got an entire month for, um, people who are interested the, in, in these changes, whether we've discussed them previously or not. So that's where we stand. So, um, our next step is to start closing in on what the baseline's gonna be for this map.
So I have a question just on procedure. When we make a change to the land use map, do we notify any of the surrounding, um, areas when a change is being made? Much like we do when we do some kind of a zoning change?
Uh, no.
So we don't do a notification like within two hundred feet like we talked about earlier on one of the, the changes?
No.
So if I'm a, a resident and I am living along that area that backs up to what was or what is currently zoned, single-family, but is gonna be part of the land use map now designated for retail, how would I know that that change is taking place, other than we make it available to the public, but there is no active notification of those people?
Um, so, and we are gonna change our process a little bit moving forward. So right now, this la, the last future land use map was adopted in two thousand eight, and there was differences of opinions on the, uh, I guess the comprehensive, comprehensive plan as a whole, back in the day, like two thousand seven, two thousand eight. And so, um, going forward, once we adopt this refreshed map that, I mean, we've spent a lot of time, you know, trying to get it out to the public. Once we adopt this refreshed map, in the future, moving forward, we're going to, if we have a zone change application and say, you know, it's an applicant wanting to change to commercial and their prop, you know, the property doesn't match, the request doesn't match the future land use map, when we write the ordinance, we're gonna cha, amend the future land use map as well. So technically, going forward, owners within two hundred feet would be notified, because part of that process is whether or not the map, the future land use map matches that request, and the map would be amended at that time.
If it, if it matches, but what I'm really suggesting is kind of before that, right? How would these folks get notified that the zoning has changed in their backyard without their.
It hasn't changed.
I'm sorry, the future land, the future use map would, would have changed, because then it's an automatic, right? They don't have to get notified if it matches, is what I heard you say. So they wouldn't have been.
Sorry, I interrupted, please.
Uh, no, so if I'm following the logic, right? If we make this, for exam, I'm gonna use the example of the five twenty-eight that we just talked about, right? That, that property there, if we say for future land use, that is, is gonna be designated as retail, it's part of the map, then there is no notification like we just talked, because it's already part of the future and that has been made public.
Yeah, it's an internally driven change.
But as, but, but at, I as a homeowner, if I lived a, again, backed up to that property, I would not necessarily have been notified that the future land use map had changed from residential to retail. So I wouldn't know that that was impending change was happening.
Right.
Until it had already happened.
So the future land use map and the comprehensive plan, um, which the future land use map is a piece of that, are long-range planning tools that the city is required by law to have. So there, it's not zoning.
Yeah, I get it, but, but what you're saying though is if someone then comes in and wants to make a zoning change, there is no notification if it's already approved on the map. That's what you just said.
No, there's still, no, no, and there has to be.
There's still notification. If you change a zone, change, if a zone change requires some.
We go through the processes with this posting of the signs.
Even if it's, even if it's the same as what's on the future land use map. Okay, that, because that's what you said. I thought, I heard you say, maybe I misunderstood you, that there would not, it would not have to be notified because it already matches what's on the future land use map.
If the official zoning that's assigned to the property now is retail and it, and the future, and they don't have to do a zone change?
No, no, that, yeah, it, then it doesn't change. I get that.
Yeah, but if the designated zoning is being changed, notice is required.
Regardless of what the future land use map says.
Right.
Okay, okay.
What it doesn't cover is, so on the future thoroughfare, right? We don't know where that road's gonna go, and we're gonna plop down some hypothetical retail on the intersection. Let's say down the road, we wanted to double that retail size as a future land use map update initiative. No notification would go to those owners, unless they're paying attention to these, or we repeat what we did.
That's what I'm getting.
Which was a large initiative for public outreach. That was one of the main drivers that we did that for this major update, because it had been so long. But you are correct, that there is, there is a way to change.
There's a little bit of a loophole in there, right? That me as a, as a homeowner may not be notified when that kind of a change takes place, because I haven't been paying attention to the map.
But only if the underlying zoning is what it's gonna be developed as. If it's zoned, if it's zoned residential and they want to put commercial, there is gonna be a zone change, no matter what it's, no matter what it looks like on the map, future land use map.
Okay.
And it could be the opposite. We had a big chunk of property on our two thousand eight map that is shown as special study, non-residential industrial emphasis, and that's all gonna be neighborhood. So it goes the other way as well.
I'm a little, maybe just a little sympathetic to the folks who, maybe they purchased that property with a, a golf course in their backyard, and they have all this open green space that's been there for a long time, and all of a sudden it becomes residential. And did they really get notification? I understand we will have made notification and information available, but would they have been actively notified so that they were, if they weren't paying attention to the public notices, that they would have been directly approached? That was, that, that was my question. Would they be? And it sounds like it depends. I mean, that's with a summary of where I just got to on that discussion. It depends on how the change happens.
It depends on the order of the change.
If the zoning changes, they will be notified. That is a concrete statement.
Yes.
Okay, so those, those two properties are probably the most contentious at this point in time, right? Um, so we'll make a subcommittee recommendation to you guys. We'll figure out what to do. Um, you'll have your vote, um, soon, um, as, as a formal ordinance change process, so. Any other input you guys have, we're happy to take in subcommittee. Public comment as well. I know we've got some people here, and then the plea for the eight people on YouTube that are gonna watch this. We're still available, yeah, maybe twelve.
We doubled, to normal.
Yeah, so, you know, the, the website shut down for public content, our public comment, we're not taking that through the forum anymore, but that doesn't mean we can't take.
Anybody.
Yeah.
Especially in our, in our coming meetings, so.
Yes, yeah, so that'll be, that'll be the end of that, uh, public engagement on the twenty-sixth.
You've done a great job. You, subcommittee, you and the subcommittee have done a great job, and obviously staff.
Yes, great effort, guys.
Thanks.
Lot of work.
Okay.
Okay. There's nothing else. Our next agenda topic is consideration and possible action regarding future planning and zoning commission dates. Aubrey?
Our next regular meeting is Thursday, August twenty-sixth, and, uh, after that, our first meeting in September would be September ninth.
Communications are next. Start with commissioners. Do any commissioners have anything that they wish to communicate, including suggestions for future agenda items, subcommittee updates, general comments, or any updates from liaison assignments? I'll start with Commissioner Hinckley.
Uh, no updates. Uh, we do have a, a ordinance subcommittee meeting coming up this next week, so.
Good. Commissioner Mann.
None, thanks.
Commissioner Sasson.
Nothing.
Commissioner Kerner.
Nothing.
One question for Aubrey. When we had that work session with council, is that a full commission work session, or is that just a subcommittee?
Um, just a subcommittee.
Okay, all right, but we will be armed with. Rec, a full, inputs, right, okay, all right. Yeah, all right.
Okay, I, I have nothing, nothing to add for this evening. Next are, um, gosh, I don't know why I'm brain-dead tonight. Council liaison updates. Council member Hanks.
Yes, I do have some. You know, before I get started.
Thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you for, um, for you all coming tonight and the great discussion. And I had some of the same questions, Kathy, about the future land use map. I realize it's a vision, but it seems like it has a lot of weight. It still seems that way to me, because once you decide this is how the land should be used, and, and, and then if council approves that, then it comes back to P and Z and somebody asks for that zone change, and how about those people that lived there before that didn't really notice? And so there's, it's a lot of responsibility to talk about future land use. You know, it, it, it does affect a lot of people, so that's just my personal opinion, because I thought it is a logical thing then to approve the zoning that would be requested that goes along with the future land use map, right? So it's kind of already decided, anyway, and that was my opinion. Not that it's, it matters, but, uh, so I just wanted to give you a couple of updates about city council. Uh, at our last meeting, uh, we talked about a proposed tax rate. It's a flat tax rate of forty-eight cents, which is still the lowest tax rate in at least, um, I think forty years in the city. And so, uh, it's not the effective tax rate because of new development and some additional, uh, values that have increased, but it does take care of the bond, uh, the bonds that have been passed and the, and the bonds that have been sold, and some what I like to call deferred maintenance items that have not been addressed in the last, well, since I've been on council, really. And so, uh, we have several things in this budget that are deferred maintenance items that I think are very critical to the city. And so I hope, uh, that passes. We did propose that rate. We'll have a public hearing on it. I think it's August thirtieth, and then, uh, we'll talk about it or pass it in, uh, September. Mary Kay, isn't that right?
Okay.
Today, our mayor, uh, declared that it is Colonel Drew Morgan Day in Friendswood. Uh, he is back being a full-time earthling right now, uh, returning from space. He and his wife were here. It was a great reception this morning at, uh, at City Hall, and, uh, it, we listened to him for a few minutes, and he presented some pictures and things that he had taken to space. and he presented some pictures and things that he had taken to space for Friendswood, and how many astronauts were living in Friendswood? It was, it was a great celebration today, uh, we also have, um, I wish I could read my handwriting. We have movies in the pool this Friday, uh, it's the last one movies in the park that we've had, but this week it's gonna be in the pool, so if you wanna get your bathing suits on and get in the pool and watch a movie, or just bring your lawn chairs. I don't.
Gabby Jaws.
No.
Trolls on.
Yeah, there it is, okay, there you go, I'm not gonna be there, but, uh, but you're welcome to be there. Also, um, the ice cream social, there'll be an ice cream social on the Monday after Labor Day. And, uh, you might've noticed the work on the sidewalks, right near the Oak Tree Park. That's part of that grant that, uh, that the city has, uh, been given by the state, and so they're gonna start the sidewalks all through downtown Friendswood, and then the light standards will soon be following. Uh, the grand opening of Friendswood Lakes Boulevard, we were going to have a ribbon cutting that got delayed because of the rains that we've had, but, but it's almost finished, if you haven't been driven out there, uh, the two or four-lane divided highway from five twenty-eight to, uh, West Boulevard is almost complete, so that will be really nice when that happens. And then we'll just need a little section to go all the way to the freeway, so that'll be coming up soon, I'm sure you'll get notice of that when it happens. Thanks for all that you do.
Thank you very much, thanks for coming. Okay, next, our staff updates, Aubrey?
Um, the June twenty twenty-one DRC report was in your backup material. Um, if anybody has any questions on those meetings, let me know, um, and I was gonna reiterate that the downtown sidewalk project did start, they're starting at Whispering Pines to Castlewood, and then, uh, they'll be working their way down five eighteen in different sections, so it is, uh, where it fits, it'll be the six-foot concrete with a fi- a one-foot brickpaver ribbon on each side. Um, some of them may have to get narrow where there's not enough room, um, and I think, uh, engineering was working on finalizing some of the easement documents, um, with some property owners, so.
When it gets narrow, it's still gonna have the brick border.
Yes, yeah.
Good.
Um, and then eventually, all six intersections will have the new, um, mast-arm traffic lights. Um, so all the wirespan lighting will be gone, and we'll have black powder-coated, um, traffic signals. So, it'll make a huge improvement to the downtown.
Absolutely.
I think that's all I have.
Aubrey, I, I didn't mention when I was talking, when you were at the city council meeting also, you wanna mention about the height ordinances being passed?
Uh, first reading was approved.
First reading was approved, and the second reading on the actual building, the Tanos building, uh, over, was approved as well, I believe.
Yeah, second reading of the PUD was approved, uh, first reading of the building height ordinance, so that will be back on the September thirteenth agenda.
For the final, yeah, thank you.
Becky, anything? Mary Kay? Okay, with that, the August twelfth, twenty twenty-one planning and zoning regular meeting is now adjourned. Thanks, everybody, for coming.